Good evening, and thank you for joining us tonight for the City Council Open Forum for 2019. Thank you to those of you who took the time to come here, and for those of you who are watching online on Guthrie News Leader or Guthrie News Page as well. We always want to stay informed, we want to get this information out there, that's why we provide these events for you. I also want to give you a heads up tomorrow night, if you want to hear more about the school bond details, you can go to Community Church tomorrow night at 6:30 is the first open forum, and then Thursday, there's another one at the Logan County Fairgrounds, excuse me, Logan County Fairgrounds, Thursday night at 6:30 to hear some more information. We always want to be connected to our community, just like our good friend Jim Smith says, "A good citizen is an informed citizen." So, thank you for taking the time to watch online or to be here tonight. So, our format is each candidate will get two minutes at the beginning to talk about their vision for the community, or whatever they want to communicate, and then from that then on, we have a couple of questions that were submitted online. We also have people in the audience that are available to write their questions down, and each candidate will have one minute to answer those questions. So, thank you again for taking the time to be here. I also want to thank each one of our candidates for being a risk taker, and stepping out there, and being willing to represent our community. So, I'm going to turn it over to Chris Evans from Guthrie News Page. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Tracy, and again, thank you to all four candidates for putting your name out there once again. You guys have deep roots here in Guthrie, all four of you, and we appreciate you willing to serve the citizens here in Guthrie. We'll start off with Don Channel, who is running for Ward Three with opening statements, and we'll go with two minutes.
My name's Don Channel. I was born here. I was born in the old hospital. I've been here, if not in town, on the outskirts of town, pretty much, my whole life. I run a business here in town that we've ran since '93. We've raised our kids here. Of course, my wife had something to do with that, but anyway, we've raised our family here, our kids are grown, and I've always talked about running for council off and on different times, and, but when you have kids, and you have your work, and all these other things, you really don't have time to do that kind of stuff, or get involved in it. But, once the kids were gone, I didn't have to be watching them every minute of the day, what they were doing. I got more and more interested in the city government and everything, and what's going on, and we've talked about it for, oh, the last handful of elections at different times with different people, and I just, you know, I consider it, and then, I haven't had the job yet, but I've had it, I can see, and enough people have told me, it's going to be, it's thankless, and it pays nothing, and it's a big headache, and so, we would go, "Why would you want to do that? I don't know." And so, you put it on the back burner. And eventually, it came up, and I got in a discussion with it, and I said, "You know, if I don't do it now, I never will. I gripe about what they do." A lot of times, the things we find out that goes on, we find out about them after the meeting, and after they've done voted, and after it's a done deal. I decided I needed to go and get involved, and try to have a say-so in it before the decisions are made, rather than after what they're, once they're made. As far as my vision, I look back to the land run of '89, and I look to 2019, we were 10,000 and growing back then, and we're 10,000 and growing today. So, in my opinion, what we're doing isn't working. We need to change it up. I mean, yes, there's been different players, different games, but overall, we're not moving forward the way I would think that we should be.
All right, Don, well, that, we'll get to that here in a second. Thank you, a little bit over time. Forgot to let you guys know, the timer over here turns yellow at 15 seconds, as though you have 15 seconds, right, but I forgot to mention that at the beginning. Haven't done this in a few years.
What's the beep? Is that time up?
The beep means you need to stop talking.
Okay.
No, it gives you about 15 seconds.
Okay.
My apologies. Well, now we know, we'll definitely get back to those points here in just a second. Absolutely, there's plenty of questions, I promise. Cheryl Paget.
Thank you. Cheryl Paget, Ward Three, and excuse me for my voice, I've been associated with Ward Three for six years now, and I would seriously like to address something at this point in time that does affect the people in Ward Three. I have watched some things on Facebook, and some videos that have been made concerning Banner Park. All of you are familiar with Banner Park, and it was suggested that the, some of these pads for the buildings were not laid properly. There is one large pad that is underneath one of the pavilions that actually is a throwback from Banner School. It was poured 60 years ago, and it was salvaged to save a little bit of money at this time. There was also, it can be repaired and replaced, if necessary, at a later date, to avoid the standing water issue that was mentioned. Also, I think it was mentioned that there were no connecting sidewalks between the outer perimeter and the trails for ADA compliance. In checking on this, I found out that there are some connecting ones at the, I guess it would be the southeast corner. However, there are connecting sidewalks in the original plans, and those will be carried out as money and time permits. There will be other connecting sidewalks from the exterior onto the walking trails, so it will be fully ADA compliant. Also, this past week, trees were donated and planted, and at that time, when some of those trees were planted, some rocks and bricks were kind of uprooted, and the rain that we had really showed them. We are expecting a semi-load of sod this week.
Cheryl, that's, that's your time.
My time?
Well, I'm sure we'll get to back that here in just a little bit.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Cheryl, running Ward Three as well. Ward Two, Brian Bothroyd, you're up.
All right, I'll speed talk on this one, then. Brian Bothroyd, Ward Two, four years prior to that, ran a campaign against Mr. Jeff Taylor, and lost by a chunk of votes, and vowed that I'd stay engaged, and I stayed engaged on every single solitary council. I watched every single one of them. If I wasn't here, I watched it on TV, I watched all the planning, I watched all the HP, everything that I could feasibly watch. And I'm fortunate in my business that I have time where I travel and stuff, or have, I've slowed that down, where I was able to do that. Okay, one thing that I vowed to is to keep everybody informed. Everybody that wanted to have a voice would have a voice, and anybody that wanted to stand up here and be heard, and maybe not with my voice, would be able to stand up here and be heard. The one thing that I vowed to do, and on the cusp of what you said, Don, is that when they vote on it, after the fact I find out about it, that's why I'm so vocal. That's why, on all these councils, you watch me, and I'm going through. Now, what does that mean? What does that say? Tell me exactly what that means. I know what that means, okay? I've already read it. I'm engaged in it, but you don't know what that means. The people out there don't know what it means, and that's what I do. I keep everybody up to date. I'm the guy that's out there in the rain, when you've got problems in your backyard, okay? That's a single individual council person that does that. The council does not do that. A councilman does that. He gets out there, and he makes sure that you know that, just like my phone number, 210-7100, I give it to everybody. That's what it is. Anybody can call me, I'm an open book. But, keeping everybody informed is what I vowed to do, that's what I continue to vow to do, and it's just what I'm always going to do. I'm going to let everybody know what's going on, period. That's it. See, I'm even done before my timeframe.
Showing off now.
Told you I got a speed talk.
All right. Ward Two, Chuck Burcher.
Yes, sir. I'd like to thank the chamber and the city for putting this on, and letting everybody be informed, and listen to people. I can basically, I've been out of city government for a while. I retired from the mayorship to, because my wife, we have an autistic grandson, she spent a tremendous amount of time helping my daughter with that, and so, I stepped away from the council. I've still stayed involved. My name's Chuck Burcher. I'm running for Ward Two City Council. I'm a three-term mayor of the city of Guthrie. I'm a 40-year resident of Ward Two. I'm retired 25-year captain, EMT, with the Guthrie Fire Department. I'm a Vietnam combat vet, a member of the Guthrie Rotary, and a member of the Guthrie Christian Church. I've served on several committees, community committees, Logan County Community Services, Rural Water, Red Cross, and the Guthrie Edmond Airport, and I'm very proud of those things. I love Guthrie, the city of Guthrie, and would like nothing better than to represent, have the opportunity to represent the citizens of Ward Two, and for the next four years. I respectfully ask for your consideration for a vote at April the 2nd. Please, if you, I don't care who you vote for, please vote, please make a stance.
All right. Thank you.
Under time, can you see that?
Yeah.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm going to dance a minute.
Go ahead, let's see that.
Yeah.
All right. We're going to move on to, or, these responsible, now it'll be 60 seconds from here on out, so we'll see how good you are now. We'll start with Cheryl Paget. You kind of touched on it a little bit, but why do you want to be a councilman, only a dollar a year, and what qualifications do you have?
I want to be a councilman because I actually like to work with people. I want to see that they're happy in their homes, and I love Guthrie. I don't, I don't know any better way to put it than I love Guthrie, and I'd like to see Guthrie bloom, if you will. How am I qualified? Well, I'm old. I've been around a bit. I received my master's in business administration from Oklahoma Christian and Edmond. I've owned a business. I've raised a family. I attend church. I have deep roots here, and I want nothing more than to see Guthrie succeed, and the people happy.
Thank you. Brian?
Yes, what was the question?
Why a councilman?
Oh, oh, because I love a dollar. You know, I've got $60, and I'm going to send the kids, the grandkids, through college with that $60. I want it because I've always been involved in this community. There was years there that I was tied to almost everybody I talked to, through the ambulance, through the fire truck, teaching CPR. I know this community, I know where their heart is, and their heart's good. They don't need somebody banging on their door every minute. I'll be there when they call, 282-4229, and the name, the name is Burcher, so write that down. If you can't get a hold of me because you can't spell my name, it's Burcher, B-U-R-T-C-H-E-R, and we answer phones, okay?
Thank you. Don?
Well, I'd started on it earlier. I got more and more interested in it as I got older and got more time to think about it all, and, in my opinion, we're not moving forward enough. We're doing, you know, the same population, the same thing for the last 130 years, and I want to get involved and try to push things forward. I want more industry here, I want jobs here, so that the people that want to work here in town, rather than get up and go to Oklahoma City, or Stillwater, or somewhere every day, they can work here if they choose to. They can be a bigger part of the community, and I just want to better the whole thing overall. I have no agenda, I'm not mad at anybody, I have nothing else that I want to accomplish other than make things better for the people that live here.
Thank you. All right. Softball questions are over with, here we go.
Give the hard ones.
All right. Citizens approved a 3/4 cent sales tax on February, in February 2016 for 15 years. We are now three years into the tax. Please share your thoughts on the capital improvement projects, including the ladder truck for the fire department. Don't look ahead, that you're going to spoil the next question, but look back on the last three years of the CIP tax. Brian, we'll start with you.
For me? So, the CIP tax brings us roughly, in a perfect world, somewhere between a million, million-two a year, that's what it's going to bring, not more, hopefully not less. And on the ladder truck, that was actually going on when I ran for council last time. I was a big proponent of the ladder truck because of multi-things. I was, I was told and convinced through research that it was going to increase our interest, I mean, our insurance rates on our homes if we didn't have this, and we fell behind on the fire department side. But, even more importantly, I look back just to a few weekends ago with the Burline Buildings burning. Had we not had a ladder truck, we probably would have wiped out Harrison all the way up to Division, okay? So, a million dollars was well-spent, wasn't a million either, it was close. Now, there's other things that go with it. There's going to be a new toy shed that has to go to house the fire truck, or the ambulances. Where are we going to get that? Okay, again, it's 1.2 million a year, that's down, by the way, in the last quarter by about 250,000. I mean, from '17, '18 to '18, '19. I can go into more detail on that.
All right, we'll have more chances to. Chuck?
Well, the CIP budget, we did need a ladder truck, and nobody knows that better than me. In my 25 years of fire service, my, our biggest fear, everybody that stepped into a pair of bunk outs down there, our biggest fear was to lose the city block, and that can happen. It happened in Seminole, there's towns that's lost the city block, and you talk about having a tooth knocked out of your smile when you lose the city block. Now, I fought fires for, when the Chinese restaurant caught on fire, and we were great. We, matter of fact, we'd give a building to that fire, and we saved that building, and the building on the other side of it. Great, great money well-spent.
Thank you, Chuck.
You didn't think I'd say that, did you?
Well, it was, there's no question.
You know I was going to say it.
Thank you. Don?
I saw your note.
Are we just talking about the fire truck, or the whole CIP deal?
The fire truck.
The last three years, including the fire truck, yeah.
The fire truck, I'll, I'll tell you, I wasn't for the fire truck. In my opinion, it's a million bucks for a snow blower to set in a fire station. The one we had was 40,000 bucks to fix it, and they brought the repair bill in and said, "It costs 40 grand to fix it. Do you want to fix it?" And the council went, "Oh, God, no." And they said, "Well, we can get you a new one for a million." That's a whole lot better. I don't know if you people realize it or not, they could have spent that 40,000 bucks every year for the next 10 years running, and not been to a half of a million dollars. To me, that's a big, that's a big ask. We could have worked on it for the next 20 years, and still not been to a million dollars, spending 40,000 a year on it. To me, I was not for it. You know, I'll stand up and own it, I've said it, and I'll own my answers, and I'll own my thoughts. That's the one thing you're going to get from me, is I'm going to tell you what I think. You don't ever have to wonder where I'm at.
All right.
It's nothing against the firefighters.
Time's up. I give you an extra five seconds in there.
Okay.
You'll have more time, I promise.
Fixing, take that five seconds off.
Cheryl.
But I didn't even talk about the rest of them.
There'll be more chances, I promise. Cheryl?
I do disagree with that statement, because in order to fight fires in our historic buildings, or our historic homes, you need a ladder truck that has a long ladder to get the fire up and, or the water up and over. So, my opinion is, it was money well-spent. We have a lot of historic homes. One, for instance, is over on the west side on 13th and Cleveland, and to fight that from the street, it would be at least three stories plus. If we did not have a ladder truck, that house would have, would be a total loss. So, I see that, I see the post office, the different buildings that are two stories plus, there is no way we could save them. I remember Seminole, that was a disaster.
Thank you, Cheryl. All right, that's looking back on it. What's that?
We don't get to rebut any of this? Can we jump in now?
Not yet, I'm trying to get to the most questions that we can.
Okay.
In here.
Come back to it.
Well, yeah, we're going to start with Chuck on this one. We looked back on the last three years of the CIP. Now, moving forward, what would you like to implement, implement as far as the CIP's concerned?
Well, you know, I'd like to have a sports facility, if that's considered a CIP budget, is it? You think? I'd like to have a sports facility. We've had a sports facility in our hand since Ms. Nephews was mayor, and that's some eons ago. There ain't anybody in here old enough to remember that, I don't think. But, we've had a sports complex. We're sending our young athletes every Saturday, and nobody knows this better than Chris, every Saturday, baseball players, soccer players end up in Chickasha playing ball, and we've got motels that need to be filled up right here, and it's a moneymaker. I even asked Holly Chapel one time, I said, "I'll put Holly Chapel Memorial Ball Field on it if you'll help us." But, every time we've asked for land, the money, oh, the city wants to buy it, and the money goes out the roof, and we can't afford it. I even, I'll tell you later.
15 seconds.
Sit on the edge of your chair, and I'll tell you later.
All right. Thank you, Chuck. Don? Moving forward, what would you like to see implemented with the CIP?
Well, before they passed the CIP, a questionnaire was sent out to all the people in Guthrie. Number one thing, if anybody doesn't know, was streets. Number two thing, business recruitment. Have you all seen any streets being built around here, or any of them re-done? We have a, they have an ongoing program where they do a certain amount every year, anyway that you're already paying for, but I haven't seen nothing new coming out of the streets. I'd like to see that, that's the number one thing that the people said they wanted. Eighty-some, 83% of the people said they wanted the streets fixed here when they passed the deal. We've done nothing. We're down here talking about number whatever, way down. The other thing is business recruitment. Go look at our industrial park, it's full of weeds. I'd like to start where the people wanted it, where 80-some percent of the people that gave that money said they wanted it to be spent.
Thank you. Cheryl?
Okay, I know that we are working on streets. That is a very expensive and slow process. As far as business recruitment is concerned, we are also doing that. There are some things that are currently being discussed and worked on, and hopefully will come to fruition in the near future. However, recruitment is a much longer and arduous process than you would think. There's a lot of competition for new small businesses. We have a lot of small towns around here. So, I feel like that, in answer to the question, and support of the people, that we are diligently working on that. We have a great staff that is working on that, as well as some members of the council.
Thank you, Cheryl. Brian?
So, we've got a committee for the sports complex, we've had that, we've been working on that for a year and a half, two years right now. It's about $14 million project. We've done about 400 and some thousand in streets with CIP money. The problem is, we got the Harrison Bridge caving in, okay? And so, we got to save money, okay, which would go to streets, and go to asphalt and everything else to fix that deal, okay? People say, "Well, just go get a grant." Oh, I haven't seen these grants. I mean, I've been on it four years, yeah, we get grants here and there, but we're not going to get a grant to come fix the entire Harrison Bridge area. It's just not going to happen. So, for the CIP moving forward, we need to buckle in, okay, just like when you're at home. If you got a hole in your roof, you can't have a party this weekend, you got to fix the hole in the roof, okay? So, we might not get to go and, and build another road, or we might not get to go and, you know, jump off as much on the ballpark as we want to, but we're working that, and we have been working that. Chris knows that, for sure.
The city's been working on that for, before we ever showed up.
I get it, I get it. In the industrial park, I don't know that that's ever been named the industrial park.
All right, thank you. We'll get back to that, I'm sure, here in just a little bit. We'll spend a little bit more time here on economic development, and we'll start with Don with this. Economic development has always been a topic that comes up at every single one of these forums. What have you been able to accomplish while on council? And this is, what would you look to do on council? The other three have been on council. What have you been able to accomplish while on council, and what can happen in the next four years?
I want to see people start moving in to our economic, the place that we have set aside out there, half a mile off of I-35. And I realize it takes time. You don't get them, people moving in there overnight, because there's a whole lot of things, and I know there's stuff being worked on, but I'm on the outside looking in, too, so I don't have near the facts that some of the people that are already on council have, but I know, we haven't done, we don't have anything out there yet. When we have economic development, we're out there turning dirt, knocking down trees, and doing stuff, and I haven't seen that, but I want to make that move forward, I want to push that, and not just that. If we have somebody on economic development working on it, I want them to go to the new mom and pop store and go, "Hey, I'm from the city. Can I help you out? Is there any information you need? Anything we can do to make you welcome? Because we want you to prosper here."
Thank you. Cheryl?
Okay, first of all, the city does own 80 acres, but it has not been designated as an industrial park. Also, I will say that there are some things that economic development, the mayor, the city manager are working on, that cannot be discussed at this point in time. It is definitely in the works, but I'm not at liberty to speak about it. So, just rest assured that we are working very, very hard to bring in more industry, more businesses, and actually have come up with some really good ideas. Bear with us, it's happening.
Thank you. Brian?
Well, that's exactly right. You know, you take an office when you swear into this deal. The executive session, I don't agree with it, okay? But, I swear into that oak, okay? So, I have to honor executive session. So, we have a lot of economic development happening that you all don't know about, a lot. Big-time stuff, that's, that, some will come to fruition, just a matter of when. Banner Park, I think, is, is going to help the economy down in the deal, in, on the west side. It's going to help in a big way, okay? I actually had, I actually got that donated to the city, for nothing, for zero, just move the dirt. You know, and I'll throw out another thing, you know, the Rural Water, which you're real familiar with. A businessman in town asked me if I would get together and put together with a group of men, business leaders here in town, and have meetings and settle it, and we did. And if we didn't, everyone in here would be paying on their, on their tax roll, okay? Because when you lose a lawsuit, and you got to pay $6 million, $5 million, it goes on your tax roll. That's what happens.
Thank you. Chuck?
Well, part of that's true.
It's all true.
Part of it's true. I know two young ladies, I have their names for anybody who wants to know, that came to the council and went first to the person who lost the Banner Park property, and they win, it was their idea. They went and talked to Alan, the owner, I don't even need to bring his name up, it's not a good deal, but they went and talked to him about donating that to the city. First ones to talk about it, and the city attorney went and talked to the attorney, and talked to the judge, and he said, "Listen, if we, if we drop the lawsuit, and he'll write this over to us, then we'll take the lawsuit off the books." I'm sorry I went over, but that's the gospel.
The mayor and I were at lunch, and the deed was handed to me at lunch. It's Stacy's place. You're wrong. You're way off, you're way, you're way off base on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Get loud as you can.
Thank you.
Let it impress us, folks. Get loud as you can.
All right. Okay, we're going to move on to the next one, we'll have time to talk about that later, if you like. All right, Cheryl, you get the next question. In our recent Biz Now, an online commercial real estate magazine, residents were talking about how they are fed up with vacant storefronts. Some cities across the country have implemented vacancy tax. They, they've also designed, designed to encourage landlords to rent out those spaces. Would you commit to that in Guthrie's downtown? If not, what's your solution?
I would have to have a lot more research before I committed to anything of that level. Cities get their income from sales taxes. The buildings are property, and the county has the ad-vulrum tax. So, first of all, I'd have to consult with a legal consultant, our city attorney, to see if a vacancy tax is even something we could legally do. However, I would encourage that other business associations, other business leaders, be the ones that actually reach the topic of occupying buildings. Why aren't they occupied? Is the rent too high? Are the buildings not habitable? Do they need to be rehabbed? Is the owner willing to do that? I think, Tracy, that the chamber would be an excellent source, and I would like to see people
They've also designed, designed to encourage landlords to rent out those spaces. Would you commit to that in Guthrie's downtown? If not, what's your solution?
I would have to have a lot more research before I committed to anything of that level. Cities get their income from sales taxes. The buildings are property, and the county has the ad valorem tax. So first of all, I'd have to consult with a legal consultant, our city attorney, to see if a vacancy tax is even something we could legally do. However, I would encourage that other business associations, other business leaders, be the ones that actually reach the topic of occupying buildings. Why aren't they occupied? Is the rent too high? Are the buildings not habitable? Do they need to be rehabbed? Is the owner willing to do that? I think, Tracy, that the chamber would be an excellent source, and I would like to see people utilize that source. We're a government, we have too much government as it is. We don't want the city involved in privately owned buildings.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, I've done a lot of research on the vacancy tax, and basically, what it tells you is if your building's sitting empty, depending upon what tax gets implemented, this is one of them, then on every hundred dollars of assessed value, you're gonna pay 10 if it sits there and just sits vacant for X amount of time. And it's a damned if you do, damned if you don't thing, because what it does is it runs people out of town. People are gonna say, "Pfft, you know what? I'm just gonna sell the building. I'm out," okay? And then the next guy, he's gonna have a problem selling the building, because that guy, or gal that's gonna buy it, is gonna know about a vacancy tax, and they're gonna look around, and you're gonna have 20, 30% vacancy, or whatever the number is going on. Vacancy tax is not the way to go, okay? I don't know at this point what's the way to go, okay? It's not my wheelhouse. It's something that I can research, and I will, and I'll commit to, but sitting here, you guys would know more than I know. You guys renovated a building, and you put some business in it, and you're doing phenomenal with it. So, you know, it's not my wheelhouse on it. I'd have to get, do more research on it.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Chuck?
I'm against it. I had a long conversation with a real estate man in this town that I very much respect, and he said, "You know, Chuck, the thing about owning these buildings is what it costs to insure them. It's phenomenal what it costs. These buildings are hard to heat, they're hard to air condition, so when somebody moves in, I'd rather have somebody rent it for less money and down the road have that owner for, that renter for 20 years than have that renter for six months, can't make it, moves out, goes away, and then you got, another guy comes in, 'Well, can you remodel this for me?'" So I'm against it, and I drive through a lot of little towns, since we're gonna run over a little bit. I've drive through a lot of little towns in a 50-year-old car that's got the same storefronts that we got. Paul Huska, Coffeyville, Kansas. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chuck. Don?
That downtown empty building deal is not a problem with just Guthrie. It's a problem all over the country, and I'd need about 45 minutes to go into all of it. But I can tell you, I'm not for it. I have no use for it. I think it's the government sticking its nose into private individuals' business, and I don't need anybody to tell me if it's okay, because, next thing, if I go for that, who's to say they're not gonna send Bothroyd down to collect for me and my wife, because I've got a three-bedroom house and only two of us living in it? It's not a place...
You can't have that. You gotta have all rooms filled.
It's not a place for the government to be. I don't need any part of it.
Write that down right here.
Thank you, Don.
High Griffins.
All right. Our next question, we'll start with Brian on this one. What is your stance on controlling some other problems we are having with animal control problems like unwanted litters and dumped dogs? Can we pass the city ordinance to encourage spay and neuter?
Okay, so I'm a huge dog advocate. I'm a huge FOGUS advocate. Von and I, you know, we've gone out on rescues before in the past. I mean, I've taken whole litters in. My wife can attest to that in the winter time, okay, with these little pups, just that people are gonna throw them in a pond, okay, and I take them in. And so spay and neuter is in my blood. If you're not, if you don't have a show dog, and you're not gonna do that type of deal, then you should spay and neuter your animal, period. There's no, it's just not right not to, and please, everybody educate themselves on it. If you're not gonna have that show dog, spay and neuter your animals. I mean, because that's the right thing to do.
Thank you. Chuck?
I think you're perfectly right, but we, there again, we're back to buildings that towns all over are fighting the same problem. That's why you see all these shows on how people are going in and rescuing. So we've just gotta deal with it, and to deal with it is to spay and neuter.
That's what it's gonna be.
Common sense.
Support FOGUS.
Thank you, Chuck. Don?
I have two pups that we take care of. The city has already took a little bit of action. I don't know how many people in here know that, but your, your city license is cheaper. I can't tell you the numbers, but if, if you've had your dog spayed or neutered, the city license is cheaper to buy than if they're not spayed or neutered. But I do feel like the city could do a lot more as far as feral cats and that kind of thing, because there's some neighborhoods, I'm talking to people over in, in my ward, they said, "You know, this guy feeds 20 cats on his front porch," and you go talk to him, and he says, "Oh, they're not my cats." Well, it's, they're not his cats, but it's illegal to do what he's doing, and I feel like the city could do better as far as finding those kind of places and shutting those kind of deals down. That would help a lot of our problems.
Thank you. Cheryl?
Well, I'm inclined to agree. I love animals, but I think that we should spay and neuter our pets if we have them, and those that are feral. It costs money to capture the animals, care for them, try to get them adopted out, get a vet to maybe donate his services, but I'm certainly for that. I prefer no kill.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on over to code enforcement. We'll start with Chuck with this question.
Right. I'm glad we're talking about that. You know, we've got a bunch of houses...
Let me, let me... Let me answer the question, Chris, please.
I think that's coming a little bit later, but here's, here's a question. Can we have a more active code enforcement department?
Oh, you have more?
Yeah, and I got a little bit more to go.
That's what's your first shot.
We need to, we need not to wait for complaints to be called in on items like trash, broken appliances, broken-down cars, burned-out homes, cars parking on the grass.
We have a skeleton crew. Doesn't make any difference who's sitting at these seats. We've always had a skeleton crew of people to deal with that. We've got houses that need to be tended to, but we've got houses, it looks like a Volkswagen went through the hood, the roof, and, and you don't have to, I can throw a small rock, hit one of them right now. And those people, it's not just going over and saying, "You need to fix this." It's going through the county, find out who owns it for sure. It's a lot of steps, and we don't have enough people sitting over there to deal with that, okay? So...
All right. Don?
Code enforcement doesn't do enough. That's one, been one of my hobby horses for years. I've talked about it with several people associated with the city, and I'm not talking about tearing down, demolition the houses like Chuck's talking about. I'm talking about, it doesn't cost you anything to pick up the trash and the appliances and the old furniture that's on your front porch and get rid of it. They have big trash day. If you can get it to the curb, they'll haul it off. You don't have to have a new house. I'm not saying you need to build a new house or anything of the sort. We've all got old houses. There are a lot of old houses in the city, but you can at least clean the trash up and keep the grass mowed. That costs very little, and normally, we'll go out and send them a letter, and if it's not related to somebody that has ties somewhere, it might get enforced. But a lot of the time, they say, "Well, you can't do nothing to him. He's Chuck's nephew."
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Cheryl?
Let me write that down.
Yes, I think that code enforcement is a huge problem. We do have a good court, pardon me, a code enforcer that's under the police department. However, it costs a lot of money to hire another person, and we do need another person. I know that. I think that a lot of responsibility, more, more responsibility should be on the property owner, and perhaps even some responsibility on neighbors. If neighbors would call us and let us know, it's impossible for one person to go drive throughout the entire city and pick out the places that need to be sent letters. We do need to step that up, if at all possible.
Thank you, Cheryl. Brian?
So I'm working with some constituents on some houses in Ward Two that are getting in a dilapidated state. I think y'all know which ones I'm talking about, and there's some others out there as well. But let's jump over to some of the houses that we've abated and we've actually, were not just threatening to tear down, but we're gonna tear down. We've done a lot of them, as our chief of police knows that. I mean, a lot. And what's encouraging is more and more of these people are standing up here at council, because again, we're giving them a chance to be heard and talk, and listen to their problem. And what's happening is, they're actually getting involved and doing it themselves so that we don't have to, and you know, they actually are. And that's huge, because then we don't have to go in and tear it down, spend 6, 8, 10 grand, and then go try to get it off of the, you know, put a tax lien on, try to get it out down the road. So we've done a lot, but there's a lot more that needs to be done.
We got about 10 minutes left as far as questions are concerned. They're gonna give you two minutes to wrap up in the night, so if anybody has any questions you want to submit, you gotta do those here pretty quick. And some of these questions are now gonna kind of, directly to a specific candidate, and we're gonna let them talk, and we're not gonna let them, let them completely finish, not interrupt them, is what I'm trying to say. Because we mentioned code enforcement, and Chuck, you're about to get into that with that deal, and that's one of the questions here submitted, is, I know you wanted to answer that question, but the building in your yard?
Oh, and it's a dandy. You like it. Let me tell you, let me be straight up with you. I'm gonna tell you that I made a mistake. I didn't read a full agenda. All we were talked about on metal buildings was the entrance and exits of our community, which my council stood up for 100%, but to get involved in what a man makes his house worth, I think we're stepping way over the boundaries. And I've had more people talk to me on the streets and say, "Chuck, thanks for standing up for us." A nice-looking metal building will be here way after I'm with Jesus, okay? A wooden building, you're gonna have to start painting and cleaning it up in five to seven years, so... But I did make that mistake, and so everybody, it won't take about an hour, and go out and get a pile full of rocks, and come back and stone me out in front of this.
Stoning it.
I mean, but you can't go with it if you've never made a mistake. That's the only buckets I wanna see show up.
Thank you, Chuck. All right. This question's for Ms. Paget. Question is, I received a mailer from you in which you talked about the extensive improvement of Ward Three under your term. A couple of things mentioned in the improvements were two, two new businesses, the Viadoc, the new apartments. Can you tell us a little bit about your role specifically in these improvements?
Well, first of all, I apologize to anybody that got the impression that I was the one that facilitated that, or actually helped make those improvements. What I did was tried to speak as if I were one of the neighbors of the incoming business. I wanted, we, we as, as the council and representing the people in our ward, look at all new business or business projects that are going into that area. How would it affect the people that are neighbors? What would it do to that particular area? And that is how we address it. We try to be the voice of the people. So if improvements need to be made on one of the buildings, we make suggestions. The council, all votes as a cohesive council as to what should be done, and then it moves forward. Basically, my involvement is for the good of the people.
All right. Thank you. Next question is for Don. You mentioned department heads living in our city. Are you aware that there, that this is prohibited by state statute when a city's population is over 5,000, 5,000 residents?
I am aware of that, and I'll repeat it here, my concerns. If you are one of the bigger department heads in here, the police department, the fire department, the city manager, those type of things, those make a lot of the biggest expenditures, and they want the biggest toys. The biggest gripe that I have with it is you come here and you demand 10 new cop cars, and then you take your check and you go home and spend it somewhere else, and you don't help pay for any of it. Same thing with the fire department. I think if you have that position, you need to live, maybe not necessarily in the city limits, but in this community, or within, say, 10 miles of city hall or something like that. There is a state statute that says if you're over 5,000, you can't do that, but we can also amend the city charter and put it in the city charter, and that overrides the state statute. So I'm gonna be pushing to get that done. I feel if you come here and take our money, you need to be part of the community.
Thank you, Don. Brian, I don't have a specific question for you, but I would like for you to follow up on that as far as department heads.
Well, I was gonna follow up on the building.
Well, you got 60 seconds.
So, you know, my question is, you didn't, you made a mistake, and I, and I appreciate that. And it's a true man that'll stand up and say that.
Yeah.
But you actually signed the deal into law.
That's right.
Okay, but then you sat there and told me you didn't. The city hall signed it for you.
Oh, I'm glad we're talking about this. I love it.
That's what you told me.
I told you that I did not sign it where the people that lived in the outskirts of this community couldn't build a metal building. I told you that I signed the one that, the county, that the planning commission brought to us, and all that was ever talked about was that we want to improve the entrance and exits of our community.
Okay, so it's still, so being that it's still mine, that's not what you said. You blatantly said you didn't sign it, and you told multiple people, that, some people in this room, okay, that you didn't sign. And so we'll just leave it at that. On that, so I'll get, so getting back over to his deal, I've got the copy that you signed, if you want.
All right, let's, let's move on from that.
Move, time's up.
All right.
Tell you, time's up.
It's up.
All right. We will start with Cheryl on this question. This is probably the last question, unless someone else has a question before we get to our closing statements. How do you respond to people who recognize that Ms. Paget is the only female representative voice on the council? Is that important?
Would it be improper for me to respectfully request to be the last one to speak on that? Are there, are there others gonna address that as well?
That's a sole question.
So, yeah, it was just...
Oh, I thought it was, I thought, okay, I thought you meant for anybody.
No, it was just for you.
Okay, I'll speak away then.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We had a sole question to me about my building, and other members have brought up the situation. So I really think that you're within your bounds to talk last, if you wanna do that.
No, I meant on this specific thing.
Correct.
But if it's only addressed to me, then I would, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. First of all, I'm a woman. I have, I have a higher education degree, so I can visit with men about businesses and things like that. I've owned a business. I also come with a different perspective. Women have a perspective more of nurturing. We care about our constituents. We, we try to put ourselves in a motherly position, if you will, and how does this affect them, and how does it affect other people? So I think personally that a woman brings a certain amount of grace to a council that needs to be interjected with all this testosterone up, quite frankly.
There you go.
All right. Okay, final question, it goes for, for Don. Ward Three has an open seat just before, prior to the window to declare your candidacy. Why didn't you volunteer for that vacant seat?
Well, like I said in my opening statement, I had talked about running in the, in the council election two or three different times, off and on, and every time, it's the same thing, you know? It's, it's dog-eats-dog, it's thankless, it's non-paying, it's a lot of hard work, and these guys that are on here, they've, they've been enduring it, and I don't know why they're signing up again. I'm an idiot, they know better. But anyway, I always just shoved it to the back burner. And that came and went before I ever seriously thought of. I, I wasn't even considering that opportunity to be appointed until later I was in a meeting and we got to talking closer to the end of the time to register to run. And I said, "You know, I've been griping all these years. I'm gonna run and I'm gonna see what happens." And then once I did sign up, I said, "You know, if we'd had this talk a month ago, I might've just been able to slide in the back door and been appointed." But it's, you know, bad on me for not thinking about it.
All right, thank you. And that, that concludes our questions from our audience. Now, we'll close out our forum here. I promise to keep it under 7 o'clock. I think we're gonna be able to do that here tonight.
Chris, could I reply with, with Cheryl?
Under your two minutes.
Yeah, we'll give you your final, yeah, we'll give you two minutes. Yeah, yeah. So, we're gonna do with our closing statements here and Cheryl, we'll let you go first.
First of all, I want to thank everybody that came this evening and all of those that intend to vote regardless of who your choice is. I have enjoyed very much working with you and with the city for the last six years. I respectfully request that you consider that I am appointed for another four. I feel like I bring a lot to the table. I desperately love Guthrie. I want to see it grow. I want to see more industry and I think it's coming. I think that it's going to bring more single housing, single-family housing, pardon me. It's gonna help alleviate unemployment and homelessness and poverty. The more people we have, the better off all of our businesses are and we as well. Thank you again and I would appreciate your vote very much.
Thank you, Cheryl. Brian?
So, obviously doing this whole thing again, I wanna thank everybody as well for coming out. The, it, the one thing I'll never do is I'll never tell you something that you wanna hear to get elected on this deal for a dollar a year. It's not gonna happen. Okay? I'm a straight shooter. I say it the way it is. Everything I say, I can back up with hard proof. Okay? Everything. So, you know, that's just me. Okay? Again, that's why I ask a lot of these questions up here. I do it for your benefit, not for mine. I would like your vote again. If people wanna vote for Chuck, I, I look at that as going backwards to a degree only because you've had your third-term mayor, three-term mayor shot. Okay? I can, I can, I can talk to-
What did I do wrong in that time?
I'm wondering, I didn't say you did anything wrong. I said you had your three-term mayor shot.
I just wanna make sure.
Okay? We've got a lot going on that I'm entrenched in. I research everything. I would never sign a law without reading it. Okay? Ever, in a million years. I would never vote for one without reading it, let alone signing it.
I like that.
Okay? And, you know, so that's me. You get, this is what you get. But I will also fight for you so that you don't have to put Wayne's Code on the back of your building that faces a bunch of cedar trees. I've been the guy that's fought for everybody on the metal buildings. Okay? I had to turn six to eight of them away because of a law that someone that's running for this council implemented. Okay? And built on his own. You know, it's just not right. No matter, any, any apology on it, it's just not right. Wrong.
Well, you best to wear yourself out on that, so I'm gonna use that alone. Cheryl?
Yes, sir.
I appointed you to the council, if you'll remember, the first time. And the reason I appointed you is because Sherry Mueller moved out of her district. And I appointed you because you can read and understand a budget. And I think you've done a good thing. Let me tell you the other side of the coin is, Don is a great personal friend of mine. I could work with either one of you. But I have a history of putting women on this council that I think can do a good job. So, and I'm not, I'm not gonna woo the, the building. I like it, everybody's looked at it like it. I've paid for my permits and if I read, I, we, it was brought to my council with none of the stipulations in the rural or the suburban area. It was to improve the community as you came into it, that you had to go 40/60. So, if it was put in, it was bootlegged. I bootlegged the building in. I'm proud of them for getting it over on me and I'm proud of me for building a barn that my wife someday will be able to enjoy the money off of that when I'm in another place. Okay? That's the bottom line.
It's a great building.
So, please vote for who you want to, but please vote. Vote. Get in there and make a stand for what's right. I'd love to do it again. If you choose that, I'm your man. But I'm not gonna be allowed at this council. I'm not gonna be disrespectful to people that come. I'm gonna be behind young people that come into this city and are hired and now they're working for Shawnee, they're working for Ticket Shack. We need to keep good, young people with their thumb on this community. Thank you very much. Appreciate your vote, but vote as you will. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Final two minutes to Don.
Guys, I, I want all of you to know, and I've said it many times and I've posted it many times, I'm elected by Ward Three. But if I'm elected, I deal with the city business. You don't have to live in my ward for me to help you or for me to talk to you or try to get you some answers. And I promise I will get you some answers. I may not know the answer that, whatever your situation is, but I promise I'll research it and I will find out about it and I will call you back. That's a whole nother rant I'd love to go on right now. But I promise I'll take, I will answer your phone calls. I'll help you whether you're in my ward or not. I was talking to a man here last weekend in my ward and he was pretty upset because his truck had got beat down in a hailstorm, had $1,700 worth of hail damage and he wanted to put up a carport. He called the city three different times, got three different answers and, and they told him, "No, you can't, no, you can't." And one was opposite of the other and he said, "The part that really gets me, I look a block down the street and the city put up a bunch of carports in their new park down there. I can't put one up, but the city can."